This evening, council is honored to have Minister Anthony McSwain here to pray with us this evening. Minister McSwain is a youth minister at Hosack Street Baptist Church. Welcome back to council.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day that you have made on today. But we ask that you continue to bless these your people who you have placed to be our public servants, to continue to give them the knowledge, the wisdom, and the discernment as they continue to do the better for our city. Lord, we thank you for our city, we thank you for our mayor, and we thank you for the future that is a holding for us. We give you all the glory, the honor, and the praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communication received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications?
No, at this time.
Are there any resolutions by council members? Start with President Protim.
Thank you, Council President. I don't have any resolutions, but I have two announcements. I will be holding a budget hearing this Wednesday, December 11th, at Barnett Community Center at 10:00 a.m. We're reviewing the proposed 2020 operating budgets for the Department of Finance and Management, Education, and Recreation and Parks. We will focus particular attention on how Recreation and Parks is increasing access to services by launching their second community center without walls model on Columbus's east side at Liberty Elementary School. The Community Center Without Walls Model, excuse me, first launched at Ekin Elementary in 2019 to serve residents in the Wedgewood community. The program was a success, and that's why we are seeing its expansion in the 2020 budget. And then on Saturday, December 14th, I will be at Barnett again for my community hours. Meet me at the playground, although we will be inside actually due to weather on Saturday. I hosted my office hours this year at playgrounds throughout the city because I wanted to give parents who constantly need to balance time with their family and advocating for their community the opportunity to take care of multiple responsibilities at once. It really has been a lot of fun, and I look forward to doing it again next year, continuing our playground tour, which my kids are particularly appreciative of. Whether or not you have kids, please come out and join us on Saturday and throughout the year next year. But especially if you have kids, you don't want to miss all of our wonderful playgrounds in the city of Columbus. That's all I have.
Thank you, President Protim. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, I have two resolutions. I would like to ask Officer Brandon Fleming and Officer Gabriel Watt and their families to the podium. Because I will be recognizing both officers, I first will read the titles of each resolution, move for adoption, and then return to the body of the resolutions. 0321-X 2019, to recognize Officer Brandon Fleming for the actions taken as a member of the Columbus Division of Police, I move for adoption.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
0323-X 2019, to recognize Officer Gabriel Watt for actions taken as a member of the Columbus Division of Police, I move for adoption.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Whereas on Wednesday, October 30th, at 1:29 a.m., Officers Brandon Fleming and Officer Gabriel Watt responded to a suspected drug overdose in the 6600 block of Carl Road. And whereas upon arriving at the scene, the officers determined that the overdose victim was unresponsive, in an attempt to counteract the effects of the drug overdose, the officers administered naloxone to the victim. And whereas despite receiving a dose of naloxone, the victim remained unconscious. Officers Fleming and Watt attached an automated external defibrillator, or AED, from their cruiser to the victim's chest to see if he could administer a life-saving shock and pull the victim out of sudden cardiac arrest. Whereas after the AED performed a diagnostic, it determined that the victim was not in ventricular fibrillation and advised the officers to begin CPR. And whereas Officers Fleming and Watt performed CPR for several minutes until paramedics were arrived on the scene, later medics would credit the performance of CPR to circulating naloxones throughout the victim's body, facilitating the victim's breathing, and returning them to consciousness. Whereas the actions of Officer Fleming and Officer Watt exemplify the mission of the Columbus Division of Police, the men and women of the Columbus Division of Police serve their communities guided by the core values integrity, compassion, accountability, and respect, and excellence. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of City of Columbus that this council does hereby express its appreciation for the outstanding service of Officer Brandon Fleming and Officer Gabriel Watt for their actions on October 30th. Do any of my colleagues have any comments? If not, I'd like to have them express to you following their engagement because I think to hear their story will be really special, and then you can certainly make comments afterwards. Thank you. Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
First and foremost, I'd like to say thank you for having us here and recognizing us. It's truly our pleasure to do what we do out here. But that night in particular, we responded to a man down and out when we got to the scene in front of this residence. He was laying on the front sidewalk. We went ahead and checked on him to see if he was breathing, if he had a heartbeat. We also were being informed by his friend that he had taken fentanyl, so we went ahead and administered the naloxone, then continued taking off his shirt to a point where we could place the pads from the AED on him. And as you said, we let the AED do its thing as far as checking him out and making sure he didn't need a shock, and then we went ahead and performed CPR.
AED said no shock advised, performed CPR, so we just did chest compressions for as long as we could until ambulance arrived, and then they were able to take over from there. And they said that, you know, us doing CPR, the chest compressions, just moved his blood through his heart and moved the naloxone through his system, and without that, it wasn't going to move through his system, it was just going to stay in his nasal cavity. So we need to pump his heart to save his life.
Officer Watt, introduce your family while you're there at the microphone.
This is my beautiful wife Jennifer, my eight-year-old daughter Gabriella, and my six-month-old son Roman.
And how long have you been on the force, Officer Watt?
My one year will be on the 17th of December this month, this year, so I'm almost a year.
Almost a year. With that, any comments from my colleagues? Pardon me?
I've been here on the force, and it'll be five years in July.
He's been around a long time. And if you noticed, why don't you tell me about the CIT badge you had?
I voluntarily joined the CIT program. I like to get as much knowledge and help in any way, in facets that I can. So any extra training that I can go to and get to help the public, that's what I'm going to do, and that's what I do. And I just, I find it interesting, I love doing it, and that's why I decided to do it.
Now, any comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Just wanted to say thank you. Certainly, we know that individuals in our community, many of them are dealing with addiction illness, and just really appreciate that the Division of Police has been trained to be able to provide the Narcan, to be able to help residents in our community who are suffering from that illness. And just really appreciate that, you know, because sometimes you think it's only fire that's going to come out, and so I appreciate the training that you've had and that you have the ability and the knowledge to be able to perform the services on our resident. And just want to say thank you, thank you to your wife for allowing you to serve, but also thank you to both of you, and thank you for you asking for additional services to be trained in other areas in our community and make our community a better place. So thank you for your, thank you for your work.
Thank you, and it's a blessing to work for a division that actually provides us with these tools and training to do these things, so thank you again.
Thank you for your gratitude and appreciation, that's all we ever ask for.
Thank you.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Dorans.
Hey, you, President Harden. No resolutions this evening, but did want to make a couple announcements. I want to announce that the Technology, Public Utilities, and Neighborhood Committees will hold our public hearing on the respective 2020 operating budgets this Thursday, December 12th, here in council chambers. The Department of Technology will present their budget at 5:00 p.m., the Department of Public Utilities at 5:30, and the Department of Neighborhoods at 6:00 p.m. Each will be broadcast live by CTV and made available on the city's YouTube channel after the event, and so I want to invite folks to come after that. I also want to wish Councilmember Mitch Brown a belated birthday from last Friday. He's always reminding us that, what's the line? Aging's so cool, everyone's doing it? Yes. New button, age is not important unless you are cheese or wine. So Councilmember Brown always reminding us the perks of aging. So with that, that's all I have this evening. Thank you, President Harden.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember, favor.
Thank you, President Harden. Tomorrow evening, December 10th, at 4:30 p.m., I will host a joint budget hearing of the Housing, Public Service, and Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committees. I encourage residents to join me at Driving Park Community Center to hear from the departments about their plans for 2020. Applications for the Columbus Youth Council have also been extended to Friday, December 13th, 2019. The Columbus Youth Council is a five-month program in which high school juniors and seniors from Columbus City Schools will have the opportunity to immerse themselves in city government and learn how they can become stewards in their community. Students will also have the opportunity to join me on an educational trip to Washington, D.C. at the conclusion of the program. Interested students should speak with their principal or guidance counselors to receive an application or reach out to my office at 614-645-5524. And lastly, finally, my office will host community hours on December 18th from 4:30 to 6:00 at the Reeve Avenue Center. Please join me for a few holiday treats and a chance to discuss your questions and concerns. That is all.
Thank you, Councilmember, favor. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I have one resolution and one announcement this evening. I'd like to invite Mr. Stan Collins, Mary Ann Collins, and the rest of the Columbus Realtors to the podium as I introduce ordinance number 325-X 2019. To recognize, celebrate, and congratulate Mr. Stan Collins on his retirement from Columbus Realtors on this day, Monday, December 9th, 2019. After 48 years of working with Columbus Realtors, Mr. Stan Collins is retiring as its chief executive officer. As a college student, Mr. Collins began his career with Columbus Realtors in 1971, working in the print shop. After serving in nearly every position and in every department at the association, he was named CEO in 2010. Mr. Collins majored in Political Science at Miami University in Oxford, Ohio, and received his BS in Business Administration, minor in Industrial Relations from Franklin University in Columbus, Ohio. Over the years, Mr. Collins has earned the Realtor Certified Executive Designation from the National Association of Realtors, signifying a personal commitment to the field of Realtor Association management and advocacy for the professional development of members and is a member of the Realtors Political Action Committee Hall of Fame. Mr. Collins' community involvement has included past president of the Columbus Downtown Breakfast Optimists Club, past president of the Downtown Lions Club of Columbus, past president of Sight Savers, Inc., past chairman of Central Ohio Lions Eye Bank, and currently serves as a board member of Homeport by the Columbus Housing Partnership. While retired, Mr. Collins will now have more time to spend with his wife, Mary Ann, their six children, and 10 grandchildren. As he begins this well-earned chapter in life, his legacy will forever live on, and his dedication will serve as an example for all others to follow. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council does hereby recognize and celebrate and congratulate Mr. Stan Collins for his many years of dedication and service to Columbus Realtors, and if I had to add anything on to the city of Columbus. Thank you, Stan. It's an honor to have you down this evening and to recognize the work that you've given to this community over the past 48 years. It's hard to believe, you know, surprisingly, it was in 1971, the year before I was born. And, but, but actually, I became a Realtor in 2009, and so when you stepped into that role, it was, it was my, kind of at the same time that I came into that role, and I can't say enough about how your mentorship has helped me to get to this position today. There was a lot of phone calls, a lot of discussion over the years, and, you know, you really championed the support that the Columbus Realtors have given for me to be in this seat, and so I truly appreciate that. But, you know, it's way, way beyond that, you know, your commitment to the, to the community, your commitment with Homeport, all the things that you're doing is, you've done has been remarkable, and just wanted the opportunity to say thank you on behalf of my colleagues and certainly the city of Columbus. So I know that John, John Myers, the president of Columbus Realtors this year, might have a few words to say.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'm John Myers, the 2019 president of Columbus Realtors, and it's been a great privilege to have worked with Stan over the years. And on behalf of Stan's friends and my colleagues here tonight and the 8,000-plus members of Columbus Realtors, we want to recognize Stan and give him a great thanks for being such a, a great input for us as, as Realtors and serving us in such an admirable way, has served our organization so well, and really deserves everybody's thanks and has my thanks. And Stan, it's been great. Thank you.
Are my three minutes up?
Take, take what you need, Stan.
It's, um, thank you, John. And I'm truly honored, humbled, and I sincerely thank you for this kind gesture. I would take this probably one last or one of very few remaining opportunities to speak on behalf of the 8,000-plus members of our great association. And to tell you that we're very proud of the relationship that the Realtors have had with this chamber and the members of this council over the years, absolutely, as we work towards protecting and, and enhancing the, the private property rights that our citizens so genuinely appreciate. I would just say I absolutely know and believe that it will continue into the future, and thank you very much.
Before I have everybody introduce themselves, I just want to make sure that, do any of my colleagues have anything they'd like to say? Yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Stan, for your service to this community, first of all, the community of Realtors, but also just the Columbus community. Since I've been on council, we certainly have worked with you on different issues, and it really has been a partnership to be able to listen to you guys, share information that will work with, make sure that your Realtors are, continue to look out for them, but also look out for the entire Columbus community. It's really been a privilege to work with you. I've always found you to be quite reasonable in terms of us moving Columbus forward, and so I thank you for your leadership. I wish you well as you continue to move into your retirement. I'm sure they'll still have lots of work for you to do, and I want to thank your wife for allowing you to, to serve this community. And it's also for young people who will be watching this, you're basically showing what can happen from, from working, as you said, in the mailroom to being the, to being the president and CEO. And so, again, just basically, just the leadership opportunities that you have found to be there, and hopefully, young people can see that if they just continue to work hard, that they can continue to achieve their dreams. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Council President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Stan. One, I really just echo what my colleagues have said about you and working with you over the years, and so thank you for forgiving of yourself to the community. And thank you for representing an organization where I say that Realtors are on the front line of knowing what's working and what's not working in our neighborhoods. And we just appreciate the partnership and look forward to working with each and every one of you and saying you deserve whatever is next for you. So congratulations, and thank you so much for your service to this community.
Thank you.
All right, I will just allow everybody to introduce themselves and tell what role you play with Columbus Realtors, or if you're, Mary Ann, you can say hi too.
John is hiding, so JP Faulkner, I'm secretary of the Columbus Realtors.
Step up the mic.
JP Faulkner, I'm secretary of the Columbus Realtors.
Hello, Tim Koken, our director of Columbus Realtors.
Patty Brown-Wright, Director, Columbus Realtors.
Jeanne Jalinski, Director, Columbus Realtors.
Chris Reese, past president of Columbus and incoming president of Ohio Realtors, and on behalf of 33,000 Ohio Realtors, Stan, we want to say thank you.
Michael.
I'm Michael Jones. I am the 2019 treasurer and will be president-elect in 2020. And I want to thank this body for recognizing Stan as well. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And I do have one announcement this evening. I will be hosting my final community hours in 2019 this Thursday, December 12th, at Tim Horton's at 5221 North Hamilton Road in Columbus, from 12:30 to 2:00. So come on out, let me treat you to a cup of coffee and some Timbits, and tell me what's on your mind. That is all I have this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Tyson.
All right. Are there any comments by our elected officials, city attorneys, city auditor, city treasurer, senior members of the area commissions? Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of ordinance or resolution from the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing now, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation? Is there a second? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read to the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation?
Finance Committee ordinance is 3050, 3072, 3081, 3107-2019. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance 3089-2019. Public Safety Committee ordinance 3106-2019. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2864, 3018, 3059, 3063, 3077, 3086, 3093, 3094, 3113, 3120, 3123, 3126, 3149-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance 2848-2019. Economic Development Committee ordinance is 3009, 3015, 3146, 3167, 3169, and 3170-2019. Rules and Reference Committee ordinance 3221-2019. Zoning Committee ordinance is 2751, 3147, and 3178-2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have, we have a couple speakers on the first reading portion of the agenda. First speaker to come before council is Ms. Kathleen Bailey. Ms. Kathleen Bailey is speaking in favor of ordinance 3146.
You caught me by surprise.
I apologize. You were moving faster than I even anticipated.
Okay, well, yeah, we, the Near East Area Commission has done quite a bit of research on this project. We've reviewed it in detail and are very strong support of it. What I want to say is, one of the things we looked at, there is a very strong symbiotic relationship between neighborhoods and schools. We hear a lot of talk about we need to fix the schools. Our thing is we need to fix the neighborhoods. The neighborhoods, when we had our wonderful urban renewal, which really turned out to be urban death, killed the neighborhoods. Schools started going down, housing started going down, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It didn't go down overnight, so it's not going to come back overnight, and we don't have any one project that solves all the problems. But this project has a lot of parts to it that address a lot of things that people are concerned about. If you're familiar with the trolley barn, it's been there for quite some time, just about ready to fall down. And usually when we have a project like this, the first thing the developer says is, I'm just going to have to tear it down. This particular developer has made the determination that they're going to save. They say 100%, but we'll go for as much as we can get. They're going to save the project. On top of that, the other facet is we want to look at more affordable housing. They have an affordable housing component to this, and more importantly, they have a grocery store component, which people have been asking more and more for the community grocery stores. And not on top of that, they are going to increase on-street parking. We've never had that happen before. So this is a multifaceted project. It doesn't fix everything, but it's certainly something that's moving in the right direction. So again, schools, we want our schools to be better, we will have to have our neighborhoods be better. So this is just a way of fixing part of it, it's not fixing all of it, but it's certainly going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Bailey. The next person to speak, come before council is Kim Barrett. I apologize. Kim is speaking in favor of ordinance 3146.
Good evening. I would like to voice my strong support for this project. I have been a 27-year resident of Franklin Park in Old Town East neighborhood. There is a lot of history here. When the legal process started over what preceded the purchase, we were at site reviews with the judges and so forth. What we found at that site was unsecured buildings, it was a brown site, and yes, there were even kids playing in it. So there is, I mean, now the site's been secured, it's no longer a brown site, and the Near East side really needs this project. It will help bring other jobs and more growth that we need. We are sorely lacking in commercial, in all commercial aspects in our neighborhood. And as we're talking about Realtors, I'm a Realtor, so I can actually address that. This is a magnificent project. We have shown our support throughout, and we've even backed it up at the ballot box. So there is no, no, no land that we can say that this isn't supported by the community. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett, for your testimony. We have one more speaker, but they are not in chambers right now, so are there, and that's all we have for our first reading. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those ordinance in the record, please?
Resolution of expression 327-X-2019. Finance Committee ordinance is 2331, 2754, 2937, 2990, 3,000, 3,001, 3068, 3097, 3110, 3152, 3196, 3222, and 3224-2019. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 2949 and 2950-2019. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 2991, 3052, 3053, 3075, 3121-2019. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2719, 2785, 2789, 2820, 2835, 2843, 2852, 2855, 2856, 2861, 2867, 2868, 2878, 2908, 2936, 2941, 2943, 2946, 2963, 2966, 2999, 3011, 3014, 3019, 3049, 3058, and 3095-2019. it up at the ballot box. So there is no, no, no land that we can say that this isn't supported by the community. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett, for your testimony. We have one more speaker, but they are not in chambers right now. So are there, and that's all we have for our first reading. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the Clerk now read those ordinance in the record, please?
Resolution of Expression 327X-2019. Finance Committee ordinance is 2331, 2754, 2937, 2990, 3,000, 3,001, 3068, 3097, 3110, 3152, 3196, 3222, and 3224-2019. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 2949 and 2950-2019. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 2991, 3052, 3053, 3075, 3121-2019. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2719, 2785, 2789, 2820, 2835, 2843, 2852, 2855, 2856, 2861, 2867, 2868, 2878, 2908, 2936, 2941, 2943, 2946, 2963, 2966, 2999, 3111, 3114, 3119, 3058, and 3095-2019. Neighborhoods Committee ordinance 3190-2019. Technology Committee ordinance is 2842, 2929, 3031, 3119, 3185-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 2923, 2992, 3037, 3096, 3114, 3132, 3141, 3156, 3157, 3164, 3173, 3183, and 3204-2019. Housing Committee ordinance is 3029, 3073, and 3153-2019. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee ordinance 2811 and 3035-2019. Economic Development Committee ordinance is 3006, 3027, 3098, 3099, 3128, 3154, 3155, and 3200-2019. Administration Committee ordinance is 2935 and 3023-2019. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 2976, 3076, 3117, 3142, 3145-2019. Small and Minority Business Committee ordinance is 3024, 3122, 3232, 3237-2019. And appointments from the Mayor's Office numbered A0196, 198, 199, and 200-2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions or comments on tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to, of approval of these items as needed consent by voice? Is there a second? Please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown? Mr. Dorans? Ms. Favor?
Yes, except for ordinance 2923-2019 and ordinance number 3141-2019, for which I'm abstaining.
Mr. Remy? Ms. Tyson?
Yes, exception of 37, 376, 2019, on which I must make.
President Harden?
Yes, with the exception of 3117, on which I'm abstaining. Consent agenda items are passed with the noted exceptions. We will not proceed with the reading of second, second reading of 30-day legislation. The first committee to come before council is Recreation and Parks. That committee is chaired by President Elizabeth Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Recreation and Parks, we have ordinance 2938-2019 to authorize and direct the City Auditor to establish a certificate in the amount of $1 million for the reimbursement of staff time related to the administration of Recreation and Parks 2019-2020 capital improvement projects, and to authorize the expenditure of $1 million from the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund. This ordinance is in line with generally accepted accounting principles, which require the capitalization of costs associated with the acquisition or construction of property. Operating dollars are saved by capitalizing labor costs in this way, which can then go towards providing additional services and programming for residents. Any questions or comments from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Council President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Mitch Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. This evening I have two ordinances in public safety, ordinance 2997-2019, to authorize the City Auditor to amend the 2019 capital improvements budget, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of Columbus City Co., Chapter 329, to authorize and direct the Finance and Management Director to issue a purchase order to Tablet Command, Inc., for the purchase of an incident command module for the Division of Fire to appropriate approximately $150,831.45 and expend $147,703.89 from the Safety Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. The purchase of this incident command module provide fire, rescue, hazmat materials, and response commanders real-time access to geographic building structural, heightened water access information related to an incident scene, and enable the pre-planned response of personnel and resources and the accountability and the CA, computerized dispatching, tracking demand. The bid information upon failure of the initially purchased incident command module, Fire, Health, Safety, and Innovation Bureau began evaluating other market lending vendors that provide such products. The product available, Tablet Command, Inc., provides a solution that is expected to exceed the requirements of the Fire Division, and is recommended that the competitive bidding requirements of the City of Columbus Co., 329, be waived to allow for the immediate purchase of this incident command module. I would like to have Director Speaks speak to the issue of the bid waiver request.
Thank you, Chairman Brown. As you know, we always try to bid our contracts. However, we recommend an exception for this for several reasons. First, this contract was originally initially bidded. The trouble is, a component of that bid, specifically the software that tracks personnel and resources, simply did not work. Due to the good work of the City Attorney's Office, we were able to get a 100% refund for that module. That, of course, caused some delays in that negotiations to get that refund. During that time, our Safety Committee reached out and looked at other modules. It was a competitive process with those modules, and we found one that we believe is able to interface with our existing technology. Therefore, given the prior bid, the competitive nature of this, time is of essence due to the delay which we were negotiating, we respectfully recommend the bid waiver in this case.
Thank you, Director Speaks. If there are no additional comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. I also have ordinance 3210-2019 to appropriate 100,000 within the Public Safety Initiative Subfund to the Department of Public Safety to provide a forgivable home loans for the Safety Forces Residential Incident Program and to declare an emergency. Over the SFRAI, the Safety Forces Re, uh, reimbursement initiative plant plan is a pilot program that will offer $10,000 in the form of a secondary home loan to police officers and firefighters who have successfully completed their probationary periods and are purchasing a home within the City of Columbus corporate boundaries. The officer or firefighter must then live in that home for five years for the loan to be completely forgivable. This pilot program will serve as an incentive for those charged with the safety of city residents to live in some of the same neighborhoods in which they work. The program will be administered by the CME Federal Credit Union, and the loan dollars will be dispersed by our city payroll. I would like to thank Jeff Carpenter, President of CME Credit Union, and his staff for their collaboration on this project, City of Columbus Human Resource Director Nicole Brandon for her engagement, Steve Stein, the President of the International Association of Firefighters Local 67, and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 9. If there are no comments, I move for passage.
Actually, I just have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. I just want to recognize and applaud the work that you've done on this piece of legislation, and all the folks that you just acknowledged, Steve Stein, folks in our police and certainly CME. We know, and we've heard from the community, that it's so important, how important it is for our Safety Forces officials to live and reside in our community, and the support that this program gives is something that makes us a safer community. And I'm just appreciative of the work that you've done and all those folks who've come to the table to work on this. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council President. The Counsel recognizes, Mr. Remy?
Councilmember Brown, I'd like to echo the Council President's comments. I think that, you know, although we can't require people to live within this jurisdiction, we certainly, we want to offer encouragement for people to live in where they work. And as the Council President said, it's so important to have people living amongst the community that they serve. And so, I'm really excited to see how this program works, hopefully see it expand, but certainly wouldn't have gotten here without your hard work and diligence and the, and the appreciation towards the unions as well, both the FOP and the IAFF for their work in, in making this pilot come to fruition. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Tyson?
I just want to thank you for your innovation. Certainly, when you look at some other cities across the country, some are doing this, but it's not a lot of cities. And so, but if you look at any of the documentaries that are on TV about how do you begin to change a community around community policing and building relationships with our safety forces, this is certainly one of the tools in the toolbox. And just really want to say thank you, and to you and to all the individuals who helped you work on this pilot. I'm, I'm very hopeful that it will be successful and that we can continue to do this. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Councilman. If there are no further questions, again, I move for adoption.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
President Harden, that's all I have in public safety. May I move to Veterans and Senior Affairs?
Please.
Thank you. I also have in set Veterans and Senior Affairs 31432019 to authorize the City of Columbus to enter into a grant agreement with the Clintonville Beachwald Community Resource Center. I'd like to ask Mr. Bill Owens and Robin Brown to please come down to the podium. In support of the Community Resource Center and their senior supportive services program to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund and to declare an emergency of $40,000. Mr. Owens, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, and thank you, City Council. I'm here not only to represent the Clintonville Beachwald Community Resources Center and the work that we do, but also the five Settlement Houses of Columbus, including ourselves, Gladden Community House, Godman Guild, Central Community House, and St. Stevens. As we can just go down the street on West Broad Street and see the Reverend Washington Gladden Social Justice Park, we can see how much this city dedicates itself to social justice for everyone and that everyone is taken care of. And I'm very proud of that. We have a lot to be proud of in Columbus, Ohio. Our senior supportive services program makes sure that older folks in our neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods have adequate food, that they have adequate shelter, that they are able to get to the grocery store, that they are able to take care of their health care needs, and access the health care that they need to be able to live a happy and healthy life. We have five social workers that are there to make sure that people are able to make it through a really complex system these days in terms of being able to manage all of the benefits that you need, and to get those resources that you need to be able to maintain yourself in your home. With me today is Robin Brown, who is the Director of our senior supportive services program. We also make sure that not only the people get safely to and from the grocery store and out on social outings, but that they get together to network together and to support one another as, as they, as they grow older. We want no one to be isolated and alone as we get older. We're open to any questions that you might have about... Yes. You, Robin, go ahead.
She, she, she works her tail off. She need to make, make sure you get clear acknowledgement for what she does.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. We also have Beth Stewart McGee here, who runs our Family Services Program. Also up this evening is some support for our Food Pantry Program. This program, we're very proud of, proud of. It's long been the centerpiece of the Clintonville Beachwald Community Resources Center. We make sure that not only everybody has food to eat, but that they, again, have all of their basic needs met. We have a very generous community that provides all manner of household items, clothing, again, access to health care, and the support they need to deal with the rigors of, of life. We have people that are victims of domestic violence, people that are in the throes of addiction, people that are homeless, that they have a place to come, and they, and they can get the assistance they need. Also, though, Beth is able to provide a venue where people can come and contribute to their community. We all have something to give. We all have assets. And she creates that opportunity for people to be able to not only get the things they need, but to provide those things for other people. Just in the past month, in November, let me find it quite quickly here, I hope, just in November, Beth's program was able to serve 686 unduplicated households, just in November. Of those households, there were 1,048 visits to our food pantry to get those things that they need, that were provided through the Mid-Ohio Food Bank and by surrounding grocery stores in the Clintonville neighborhood and, and beyond. So that represents 2,051 unduplicated individuals that were provided with the help they needed to be able to, to get by. And so, that represents 3,139 visits for those individuals just in one month and all alone, 34% of which are children, 18% of which are seniors, and she distributed 48,182 meals, in addition to those meals provided through our community meals that are held on Tuesday night and Sunday morning.
Are there any comments from my colleagues? I have to tell you, I said, I went over to the, the agency a few weeks ago, and watching Beth work and work her magic with all the people that were there, the volunteers, the ability to get the food and all the things coordinated was really, really something special, and something for always to appreciate. When you hear those numbers, they don't really resonate until you know someone who has difficulty with homelessness, or a senior citizen who can't get around and needs somebody to be able to help them do things. These folks do a heck of a job. With that being said, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Council President, that's all I have this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Dorans. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. First, in Public Utilities this evening, we have ordinance number 2871, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Fields Excavating, Inc., for the Eats Gates Street Area Water Line Improvements Project in the amount of up to $3,304,166.52. To encumber funds within the Department of Public Service Design and Construction Division for prevailing wage services in the amount of $2,000. To authorize the appropriation transfer of, of $3,304,166.52 from the Water Sewer Reserve Fund to the Water Supply Revolving Loan Fund. To authorize the appropriation expenditure of up to $3,304,166.52 from the Water Supply Revolving Loan Fund, Account Fund. To authorize expenditure of up to $2,000 within the Water General Obligation Voted Bond Fund, and for, for the Division of Water, and to authorize amendments to the 2019 capital, capital improvements budget. The goal of this project is replace or rehabilitate the existing four-inch, six-inch, and eight-inch water lines in this area that have a high break frequency. Replacing these lines will improve the water service, decrease burden on water maintenance operations, and reduce water loss on the south side in Marion Village area. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance number 288-2019, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and extend an agreement on behalf of the City of Columbus between Kurtz Brothers Central Ohio LLC and the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio, and for the design, construction, and operations of organic waste recovery and reuse system project, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,200,000 from the Sewage System Operating Fund. The City of Columbus is committed to providing environmentally friendly programs for the beneficial use of yard waste, sewer sludge, fats, oils, and grease, and other waste, waste streams from the community, and is continuously looking for alternatives to landfill disposal and incineration. This modification will allow for trucked-in waste disposal, a beneficial reuse program for the incinerator ash, and a fixed rate of 3,350 per ton for the sewage sled processing. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 2915-2019, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Peterson Construction Co., for the Morris West Booster Station Improvements Project. To authorize expenditure of up to $1,177,300 within the Water General Obligation Voted Bond Fund, and to provide for the payment of prevailing wage services to the Department of Public Service. Design and Construction Division in the amount of up to $2,000 for the Division of Water, and to amend the 2019 capital improvements budget. Increased demand on the water distribution system has required the pumping capacity of the Morris Road Booster Station to increase. Currently, there are six of the eight pumps are 350 horse model, horsepower models. This project will upgrade the final two pumps to match the performance of the six others. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance number 2931-2019, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to renew an existing engineering agreement with Black and Beach Corporation for the wastewater treatment facilities upgrade, General Program Number Four, overall engineering consulting, consultant services, and to expend up to $1,609,900 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund. This is a planned contract modification and a renewal with the additional services identified in the original contract ordinance. The project provides many metrics on various environmental factors that are noted in the work to be performed, which will be, which will assist the city in decision-making on environmental issues. These decisions have a direct impact on the capital and... These decisions have a direct impact on the capital improvement budget amounts and scheduling to address the environmental needs. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor, Reemy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Last, in public utilities, we have ordinance number 2956-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to renew the professional engineering services with CH2M Hill Engineers, Inc. for the Parsons Avenue Water Plant, this is a tough one, Hydrochlorate Disinfection Improvement Project for the Division of Water, to authorize a transfer in expenditure of up to $1,632,200 within the Water General Obligation Bond Fund and to amend the 2019 capital improvements budget. The overall project will convert the Parsons Avenue Water Plant disinfection process from the current gas-based chlorine system to a liquid sodium high-clogenate disinfection system, which is much safer and much harder to say. The potential threat of a release of chlorine gas will be eliminated with this project. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor, Reemy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
And hopefully I never say that again. Council President, with your permission, may I move on to technology?
Please.
Thank you. In technology, we have ordinance number 2928-2019 to amend the 2019 capital improvements budget to authorize the transfer and appropriation of cash between projects, to transfer $216,042.30 from object class one to object class three to fund the balance of the contract not funded by capital dollars, to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to enter into a two-year contract with options to renew for two additional one-year terms with CDW Government LLC to provide for the purchase of a new hyper-convergent infrastructure solution manufactured by Dell Technologies, and to authorize the expenditure of $2,644,901.10 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division. Information Services Capital Improvement Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of $216,042.30 from the Information Services Division Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. For those of you who may need me to explain in layman's terms about the passage of this ordinance, this will allow the Department of Technology to continue to modernize the city's data center by moving from an exclusive hardware-based storage solution to a more efficient, dynamic, and cost-effective software-based storage solution. Benefits include decreased cost of deployment, maintenance, and operation, along with a simplified management. Director Wirth, I'm pretty sure I probably left something out there, and this is a pretty big deal for the department and for the city, so I'd like to ask if you would like to provide some additional comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President Harden, President Pro Tem Brown, Chair Dorrance, and Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this important ordinance. As Councilmember Dorrance mentioned, this investment in hyper-converged technology will fundamentally change the way the city manages its data centers. It's first major investment in our data center technology in over 20 years. It will allow DOT to better serve our internal customers by significantly reducing deployment time of servers and storage, including eventually self-service. It will also improve the performance of our underlying infrastructure and increase our disaster recovery capabilities for the city collectively. It will also reduce the city's carbon footprint by reducing our electricity and our cooling consumption. Finally, it will allow DOT and the city to reduce upfront costs by purchasing only what is needed today, and then to grow the performance capacity and redundancy of our infrastructure incrementally through a scale-out approach. Thank you for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director. I just want to, again, highlight the innovative nature of what the department's doing here. Again, saves the city money, efforts, saves on our carbon emissions, and just basically good government all the way around. So with that, do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor, Reemy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
President Harden, may I move on to rules and reference?
Please.
Thank you, sir. In rules and reference this evening, I have ordinance number 2952-2019 to amend various sections of Chapter 3109 of the Columbus City Code in order to establish standardized terms for area commissioners, and to specify the Department of Neighborhoods as the city department designated for providing assistance to area commissioners. Last week, the Neighborhoods Committee held a public hearing in council chambers to gather feedback from area commissioners about proposed changes to Columbus Code Section 3109 that covers area commissions. We had a great turnout, probably the best turnout I've ever experienced of any hearing here at City Council, and many of the commissioners spoke in favor of the code changes proposed here this evening. However, I'd like to update you regarding the amendment to the proposed code changes I've submitted to the Clerk. Based off that feedback, we received that public hearing directly from the area commissioners themselves. I'm comfortable moving forward with the standardizing of all commission terms to three years. Again, most of those who were intent on that in the hearing approved and spoke in favor of this change. Council will also move forward with having area commissioners be served by the Department of Neighborhoods. Instead, currently, the code reflects the Department of Economic Development. To me, this is a simple language cleanup that reflects current practices since Mayor Gunther created the Department of Neighborhoods four years ago. Council's amendment tonight will remove the proposed seven-member maximum for area commissions. Though this will only affect a few area commissions, we heard from enough of those present last week that I feel it's time to make that change, and folks will still be able to meet the quorum requirements under their current membership. We presented a proposal, held a public hearing, and made changes based off that public hearing directly from feedback provided by the public. This is how the process is supposed to work, and I hope the commissioners feel that they have been heard. I would like to personally thank everyone for their hard work throughout this process, our council staff, the staff of the Department of Neighborhoods, the director, everyone who had a hand in this process throughout. The Department of Neighborhoods did not have an easy task in front of them, and I want to thank the director and her team to getting us to where we're at today. Director Carly Williams Scott, would you like to offer some comments this evening?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Dorrance, Council President Harden, and members of council. As you mentioned, this legislation will move forward with those three code changes. In addition, the legislation will, the department will work with area commissions to implement best-practice guidelines, which will further assist area commission operations, provide standardization of basic operating procedures, diversify area commission makeup, and provide training and technical assistance to all area commissioners. We would like to thank council for their support of the updates to City Code 3109 and the best practices guidelines. I would also like to share that we will be holding our second area commission and community collaborative leadership retreat on this Saturday, December the 14th, from 8:30 to 11:00 at the Jerry Hammond Building at 1111 East Broad Street. Those who are serving in leadership roles, chair, vice chair, zoning chair, secretary or treasurer, or are interested in serving in one of these roles in the area commission are encouraged to attend. The session will be facilitated by Dr. Tina Pierce of Worth Associates. If you are interested in attending, please email dr. pearce@pearcetworth@gmail.com by Thursday, December 12th. Again, thank you for your support, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director. Want to remind you and the commissioners to know that my office stand is ready and willing to help move additionally this process for the best practices which you mentioned will be shared with the commission for them to use and benefit from as they see fit and make the next great step in the partnership between the city and our neighborhoods. I know we here at council are working on securing additional funding to help enhance our work together to support these commissions. This funding can be used for additional training for area commissioners, new technology opportunities, collaborate between commissions, and offer grants for expanded resources. We'll certainly be working to provide more details as they become available. I believe these resources, along with the work of the Department of Neighborhoods and the area commissions, will benefit from all those involved to make Columbus the best version of itself. The feedback the commissioners have provided us over the past few weeks has been large and noted. The commissioners, I think, have proven once again that they're truly the first line of communication between our neighborhoods and city council. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? We do have one speaker slip on this legislation this evening, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council.
Go ahead and give your documents for me, please. Well, thank you for having me once again. I'm in all favor of these changes. First of all, I just want to say thank you to all of you. Now is the time for the change, for these code changes. But I also did recommend a term for two to three years on the area commissions. I was intrigued with the other area commissions had 17 and 21 people. Now, you know, we all talk about these area commissions, but like I said again, I'm all for these changes, but also we're also leaving out the multi-disability people, visually impaired, like myself. You know, the case if I want to sit up here, you know, I'm looking at a two-year term on this, looking at the code changes to be changed from 3109 to 3172. Now, you know, we talk about creativity and ideas, brainstorm outside the box here, you know. Rob Dorrance, you should get a whole packet of the colorful paper and also the things I have been to with North Linden. You know, there's sometime form can be not met at the correct time due to seats that have been vacant. So again, I'm in all favor for all these changes. You know, it's not that you're not overseeing, but you all want to make sure business are done correctly in some of these neighborhoods, you know. Like I said, for a long time, I didn't want to sit on the North Linden Area Commission, but not at this time right now. But like I said, again, I'm all in for these changes, massively changes with a body of seats to be filled, up to 17 to 21 seats on those area commissions. Some of these area commissions does not have the capacity for that, so I recommend for 17 to 21, like I heard from the university district. You know, it's kind of big and everything. That's why I would like to see all through the state of Ohio. I'm very intrigued with Ohio State University because it's a larger facility, you know. I want to see all the area commissions have 21 to 17 seats filled in this area. You know, that's dealing with different people, that different languages, and also dealing with multi-disability, visually impaired, multi-handicapped. That's what I would like to see. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. And certainly one of the things that both the department and council looked at throughout this process was making sure that quorum is very important for the area commission to be met, for them to be able to conduct their business, which is, I think, why it's, you know, important for them to be able to set that in their bylaws, what they feel like is going to be appropriate number of folks in order to have, to be representative of both the neighborhood, but also for them to be able to have the structures in place to actually conduct their business. And I think that's something that moving forward, as we look at the best practices and different folks considering adopting their bylaws differently, I think that's certainly going to be something that's going to continue to be reviewed. Director, do you have any comments? Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? President Harden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd again want to say thank you to your office, to your team, to the council engagement office, to the Department of Neighborhoods. I hope that the commissioners have felt through this process, through you guys being open, through the countless community conversations, through the emails, through the phone calls, to the in-person meetings, that how much we value their input and their engagement in the work that we do in moving this city forward. And I hope that they can respect, because there were conversations, and there were some disagreements about how we got here, but this final piece, I think, is fair, and I think the recommendations for best practices are something that this council wants to be a partner with, the department in encouraging as we move forward, so that we are, one, looking out for, making sure that the area commissioners have the most resources, but are also protected, to make sure that they have what they need to carry out the work that they do that is so important to this department. But just want to say thank you. It took a lot of time. The folks don't see the hours of engagement that you all and through your leadership led in this process, so thank you, sir.
Thank you, President Harden. Yeah, one last comment before I move for passage. I think it's very easy for folks to look at the process that we've been through and the code changes here tonight, sort of the end of the process. I think both council and the department don't view it that way. We view this as an ongoing initiative to make sure that we're putting the area commissions, they're such a vital aspect to all of our neighborhoods, to continue to make them as effective and as powerful to voices of the neighborhoods as we possibly can. So I just want to encourage folks that as we continue to look at ways to empower commissions, I know the department's centrally focused on this, and there's a lot of different voices that are going to continue to be heard on this. So with that, first, I move to amend as amended to the Clerk.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor, Reemy Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Now I moved, moved for passage as amended.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor, Reemy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, President Harden. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Environment Committee. That committee is chaired, is that true? She's joking. I skipped a whole page. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Faver. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in public service, we have ordinance number 317-2019 to authorize and support an application by the Department of Public Service for technical assistance for Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission and furtherance of the development of speed management and traffic calming framework and to declare an emergency. The Public Service Department was recently awarded a technical assistant grant by Morpsey to develop a speed management framework. This new framework will serve to proactively identify, prioritize, and address speeding concerns throughout the city, which impact the quality of life, public health, traffic safety, and mode choice for our growing region. This will help effectively and equitably direct traffic calming efforts to areas with the highest need to provide the most impact. Director Gallagher, are there any additional comments on this grant you'd like to make?
Yes, thank you. President Harden, council chair, favor, other members of council. Currently, we are very reactionary to the hundreds of speeding requests or speeding concerns that we receive from the citizens of Columbus. And as Columbus continues to grow, we know that we are going to be unable to respond to each of these speeding concerns on an individual basis. So creating the speeding, the speed management framework will allow us to organize and analyze our existing speed, volume, crash, and other sources of data to effectively and equitably design and implement speed management measures. And then, long-term, we'll use this framework to inform policymaking and prioritization process, ultimately not being reactionary and being, being, not reactionary, what's the other word? I'm looking, thank you, proactive in enforcing and being able to get ahead of the speeding concerns of our citizens. So this will be something new for us. It's something that we will be testing and piloting as we go, and we're very excited about this. So thank you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Director Gallagher. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Councilmember. Director, part of the question would be calming devices. You know, when we're talking about things on the highways, again, when you go into the neighborhoods, it presents as a significant difficulty for public safety vehicles, and often that gets into conflict with the community. They want the calming devices, but then when public safety has to respond, the fire apparatus has to slow down in order to go over those calming devices. So part of the grant, to make sure that people are aware of the fact of the complexities associated with just saying we want calming devices, could have an impact on response times for public safety.
Absolutely. That's a very real concern, and right now, we're actually working in two neighborhoods, the Linden neighborhood and the Hilltop, to create traffic calming systems, so we're not pushing an issue from one street to the other street. And as we're doing that, we have members from public safety, from police and fire, both on that committee, working with us to make sure that we're not causing any issues for them.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Any other questions or comments? Seeing that, I would move for passage. Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor, Reemy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance we have is 3118-2019 to amend the 2019 capital improvements budget to authorize the appropriation of $1,329,437 within the street and highway improvement non-bond fund, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,329,437 from the street and highway improvement non-bond fund, to make payment to Hamilton Crossing LLC under the terms of an existing construction guaranteed maximum reimbursement agreement and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the appropriation and expenditure of $1,329,437 deposited by the deposited by the Ohio State University with the city as a part of a construction guaranteed maximum reimbursement agreement with Hamilton Crossing LLC. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I'd move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance we have is three-one-three-zero dash two thousand nineteen to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete the roadway improvement Medina Avenue from Hudson to Briarwood project and to declare an emergency. The city intends to make, improve, or repair certain public right-of-way by completing the roadway improvement Medina Avenue from Hudson to Briarwood project. Through the real estate acquisition in the vicinity of Medina Avenue and Hudson, the city will be able to fully execute those improvements, which will be open to the public. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I'd move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance we have is three-one-four-eight dash two thousand nineteen. I'd like to invite Alyssa Chenault from Smart Columbus to the podium as I read the legislation. Three-one-four-eight is to authorize the transfer of appropriation with the Smart City Grant Fund and within the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund to authorize the chief innovation officer to provide incentives to program participants relative to the Smart City Challenge Connected Vehicle Environment Project, to authorize a waiver of the formal competitive bidding requirements of Columbus City Code, chapter three-twenty-nine, for the purchase of the incentives, to authorize the director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into contract with Omni Card for the purchase and distribution of incentives to program participants, to authorize the expenditure of up to three hundred and ninety thousand dollars from the Smart City Grant Fund for the purchase of incentives and the cost of fees associated with the distribution of those incentives and to declare an emergency. The Connected Vehicle Environment will launch in July, two thousand and twenty along High Street and Cleveland Avenue, north of Fifth Avenue, and from Morris Road, east of High Street to Steigler Road, including intersections with the highest collision rates in the city. Starting in January, Smart Columbus will seek one thousand residents to install safety equipment in their vehicle that provide in-car safety alerts so drivers can make more informed driving decisions to improper driver safety, to improve driver safety, excuse me. Ms. Alyssa, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Favor. Uh, so starting in January, as you mentioned, Smart Columbus will seek a thousand residents to install safety equipment in their vehicles that can provide in-car safety alerts that can make, help make drivers make more informed decisions and improve driver safety overall. Some examples of these alerts are blind spot detection, emergency brake warning, intersection movement assist, red light warning, forward collision warning, and school zone indicator. Installations will be provided for free for residents by local auto shops, and installations will take about two hours. So Smart Columbus understands the busy life of our residents and how difficult it can be to get to their, their vehicles to an installation appointment. So we've established this incentive program where residents can earn up to three hundred and fifty dollars in Visa gift cards for their continued participation in the program. Residents will receive fifteen dollars in Visa gift card for taking a fifteen-question pre-qualification questionnaire, and upon qualifying, they'll receive that gift card. Once a resident qualifies, they'll be able to book their installation appointment online. What those qualification criteria are, they must be over eighteen, travel frequently along the corridor, which is Cleveland, High Street, Morris Road, have a valid driver's license, registration, and insurance, be willing to have the safety equipment installed in their vehicles, and have their vehicle in good aesthetic condition, no paint peeling, for example. Residents will also receive a two hundred dollar Visa gift card for completing that installation of the equipment. And then we're asking residents to complete three surveys during the duration of the program from July, two thousand and twenty to March, two thousand and twenty-one. For the completion of the first survey, they'll receive twenty dollars. The second survey, thirty dollars. And for the third survey, fifty dollars. We thought it was important to stagger so we get that feedback all throughout the program. How we're really evaluating success for this program is by, uh, measuring residents' perceived impressions of increased driver safety. So that's why incentivizing the surveys is so important. Beyond that feedback that we're collecting, we're also collecting information on how many alerts they get and which ones they get in what areas. But the data that we're collecting is anonymous by design in accordance with our data management and data privacy policies. No information will be shared with police or insurance companies. So how residents can express interest is by logging onto her website, smart.columbus.gov now, or in January, we'll be launching columbusconnectedcars.com, and they can take our pre-qualification questionnaire there.
Wonderful. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Council President Harden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is, this is connected to, but not directly, uh, on this part of the funding. Could you speak to, I know we worked and we were actually having this conversation this morning about the, the folks that we are working with to install these onboarding?
Yes, I can share some info on that.
Yeah.
So we've identified five locations to install the, the safety equipment for the Connected Vehicle Environment. We reached out to a hundred and twenty auto shops within the corridor and surveyed them on their capacity and interest in participating. And of those, we did some site visits and narrowed it down to five locations. Uh, our top location is Two Brothers Automotive, which is on East one sixty-one in the north side of Columbus. Two locations in Linden, Sound Chamber Audio, which is in South Linden on Hudson. Procat Towing, which is in South Linden on Dulles. And then we've also working with two institutions, Columbus State Community College as our education partner that will also be our workforce development aspect, where we'll be training twenty participants through a paid internship, uh, two hundred hours of internship to learn this new technology and how to install, as well as installing at OSU, since that's a main part of our corridor as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? With that, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. President, ma'am, please move on.
Please.
All right. We, in housing, we have ordinance number three-zero-two-eight dash two thousand nineteen to authorize the director of, uh, Department of Development to enter into two contracts with the Community Development Collaborative of Greater Columbus to provide administrative and CODO operating support to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to, of, excuse me, one hundred and seven thousand, five hundred, uh, thousand, five hundred dollars of two thousand and twenty home funds to authorize the expenditure of one hundred and seven thousand, five hundred dollars from the general fund and to declare an emergency. I'd like to invite Steve Gladman from the CD Collaborative of Greater Columbus. Up as I, there he is. Under the home program, the city allocates funds to community housing development organizations to pay operating costs of the agencies. Codos are nonprofit organizations that work in neighborhoods to develop affordable housing through rehabilitation of existing housing stock and new infill construction. Mr. Gladman, the floor is yours.
President Harding, President Protem Brown, chair favors, members of council. My name is Steve Gladman. I'm the president of the Affordable Housing Trust for Columbus and Franklin County. The trust provides management services for the Community Development Collaborative of Greater Columbus. We provide, uh, technical assistance as well as, uh, funding. The collaboratives of five oh one C three. The city is the largest funder of the collaborative. The other funders are the county, United Way, Columbus Foundation, Central Ohio Community Improvement Corporation, um, PNC, Ohio Capital Corporation, and Fifth Third Bank. So there's a variety of funders, both from the philanthropic side and financial institutions. Uh, this year, the trust, or excuse me, the collaborative has provided funding of four, five, uh, community development organizations, Homeport, Community Development for All People, Homes on the Hill, Fuel, which is also known as Franklin Development Association, and the Gropchard Ward Community Foundation. All of these organizations do work in the housing, uh, space. So they are producing affordable housing of various kinds. It can be low-income housing tax cutter project. It could be a rental project. It could be a for-sale product. It could be a, a project that is involved with the community land trust. So it's a variety of, of initiatives. This provides administrative money, uh, for these organizations to do the work that they do in the communities. They do a variety of other things, but this funding is specifically for their work in the housing component.
Thank you, Mr. Gladman. Interim Director Stevens, do you have any additional comments to add?
Thank you, Chair Favor. I've no further comments, but be happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And last, we have ordinance number three-zero-seven-four dash two thousand nineteen. I'd like to invite, uh, Mr. Ephraim Washington Lately Jr., Sean Stevenson, as well as Assistant City Attorney Steve Dunbar to the podium. Three-zero-seven-four is to authorize the director of development to execute any and all necessary agreements and deeds for conveyance of title of one parcel of real property, fifteen thirty-two to fifteen thirty-eight East Livingston Avenue, held in the land, land bank pursuant to the land reutilization program and to declare an emergency. This auth, this ordinance authorizes transfer of one parcel located at fifteen thirty-two East Livingston Avenue to Elements of Change, who will rehabilitate the existing multifamily structure to be maintained as a rental unit. I am particularly excited about this ordinance because it truly represents the power of a community land bank and the possibilities that formerly vacant and abandoned properties like this one can hold. I've invited Assistant City Attorney Steve Dunbar to the podium along with, um, Mr. Ephraim, as well as, uh, Mr. Stevenson, because of the work that the city attorney's office has done to nurture, uh, this relationship and to provide opportunities for the transfer of property in the land bank to individuals that are passionate about, uh, helping to uplift our communities. So the floor is yours, gentlemen.
Thank you. Uh, my name again is Ephraim Washington Lately. And in short, we're here to speak about, uh, the property and the locality of the Driving Park area that is off of, uh, East Livingston. Um, it is a challenged area in several ways, and, um, that is what we do. So we have gone in there, um, next let me back up. We have a boxing gym that's actually less than a mile and a half away from there. And a lot of the residents and some of the coaches actually that we have are from that same area, literally a block or two away. And so we know very intimately the concerns that they have, what they would like to see. Um, we've also spoken with Woda, who is doing a project off of Livingston. Uh, one of my friends I found out actually is an architect there. So, um, we're familiar with that project as well and the architectural direction. And so, uh, in short, um, with my background in real estate, uh, in the community, as well as in finance, uh, we are, um, hosting a project that covers three areas. And those three areas are collective engagement, crime reduction, and creative construction. Uh, in the area of collective engagement, uh, we are, have already engaged at-risk, uh, youth, adults, uh, current and former, uh, felons, um, and people that are in illegal activity that may not have a record. And what we're doing are creating, with the relationships we have, pathways to addressing the underlying financial, socioeconomic needs that they have. Um, we've done this unofficially in the past, and so now we're taking a more official approach to that. I personally have over a quarter million dollars of my own personal money that's been invested in this area over the last three years, um, both real estate and in programming and in social work. Um, and so again, this is a step towards making it more official, right, on paper. And, um, uh, in crime reduction, we've already begun working in the area to reduce the loitering, uh, the prostitution and the drug use and sales in that area. If you're familiar with it, you would know around four, five o'clock or anytime, you can drive over there, and there are a dozen or so people standing out engaging that activity. If you've noticed in the last two months, you don't see that. So that's a part of the proactive work that we've already started doing. Um, and lastly, uh, the simple part, construction of four units. And the overall goal there is to increase homeownership over time through beautification by also creating a, a new and existing homeownership base with individuals that are aspiring to live in the area as well as move on into homeownership in that same area. Uh, with that said, I'll open up to any questions or comments from my peers.
Mr. Dunbar?
So Ephraim just made something that is very, very cool sound very, very boring. Um, so just very quickly, by way of background, Sean Stevenson is a local guy, did a lot of really rough stuff as a young man, got caught, had the opportunity to talk all about it and walk away, told everyone to stuff it, did twenty years in federal prison and decided in there, I don't care who you are, what you done with. Sean, over that ti, and again, he earned it, this is twenty years in the can, built a significant national network of some of the baddest people in the United States of America, literally. Founders of significant gangs in major cities in the United States. Sean came out, has done things with that national network and locally. It's, it's almost spooky when you see it happen. I mean, it's hard to believe, but, but when it actually happened, it really is different. He knows he can't mess with me. So, um, but, but, but seriously. It, it, Ephraim and Sean got hooked up probably three, four years ago. I got hooked up with them, uh, about a year or so after that. We've worked very closely on a lot of things since then. Um, and, and just to put it frankly, these guys have a level of credibility, a level of authenticity with the folks in our city who are most directly impacted by violence and who most directly impacted. I mean, when, when he's, well, we're gonna talk to hands-on training with it. I mean, it's gonna be guys who have pulled triggers working on this house. Um, and, and the, the vetting process is gonna be Sean Stevenson walking up to them and saying, this is your neighborhood, this is our project. If you want to work on it with us, this is a really cool opportunity to make a little bit of money and do something big in your neighborhood. If you don't, I don't want to see you here again. Um, and, and just to get, like, there's a good amount going on in that stretch of Livingston. The violence, the crowds really do make it tough to get things done. Sean and I are out there looking at this particular place. There's a group of guys, I'm sure they're dealing, probably have a pistol on them. Sean's like, watch this. We walk up and talk to them, within two minutes, they want me to take their picture with Sean. Um, and, and just the fact that we had, and I mean, this is six months of wrestling with this thing to get us here. But the fact that, that we have them willing, um, we have you all willing to support this, Director Stevens at Development, John Turner at the Land Bank, the administration as a whole, this has been a long time coming. I mean, I know everyone gets up here and says, well, I'm doing something really cool. Thanks for, like, this is a big deal. This is bold. This is not things regular people do, like, this is a significant opportunity to build genuine trust with a large segment of people in our city who, who rightfully think they don't get heard through the normal channels. Um, and, and the fact that we are, we are doing this project with these folks on, on this tangible and intimate a level, um, it's just real. It's a big deal. Thank you all so much. I cannot stress enough. Everyone thinks their stuff's a big deal, ours is. If there are, if there are any questions, we would collectively be happy to, to answer them.
So you're, you're really being generous when you say just only six months. This has really been two years in, in the making, developing this relationship. And this would not have happened without Councilmember Brown. And so I told you I was gonna toss this over to you to say something. But quite honestly, you're the reason why these gentlemen are here. So, yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Favor. I have had the benefit of knowing, um, Mr. Stevenson for a very long time. Met Mr. Lately about three years ago. Uh, they have a passion, if you will, for working with troubled young people. And I use the term, the traditional term of troubled. Sean will call me all hours of the day or night, because he knows he can, and discuss issues with regards to what's going on in the community. An opportunity for them to be able to interact with people who have problems in the way in which they can do that is significant and very, very special. I am overwhelmingly pleased that this project is moving forward. All too often, we forget that it's how you communicate the circumstances as opposed to law enforcement getting involved and doing their thing. Uh, as you said, Steve, yes. And Sean and I have done what you're talking about many, many times in the sense of how to communicate to young people that there are alternatives to their behavior. The objective of learning new skills, I mean, they've done murals in the community, they picked up trash in the community, they've done cleaning in the community, beautifying the community, and nobody touches it because they understand that they were part of what was done to make that all happen. And anything to try and short-circuit violence in the community. Uh, for those who, Sean, why don't you turn around for a second? He calls himself Mister Vi, Mister End the Violence, thank you. And that's exactly what he tries to do at all times, uh, to try and end the violence. And that's exactly what he tries to do at all times, to try and end the violence, establishing relationships not only with the community, but also with law enforcement. Not a whole lot of people have that ability to move in both those circles. Shawn does. And I'm very pleased and happy that Councilmember Faver was able to take this project up and move forward with it to make it all happen. We're blessed to have you part of the community. One of the key issues that people forget, they think, you know, always worthwhile to bring the out-of-town gunslinger in. When you got a gunslinger in your own town, they can help clean things up if you give them the opportunity to do so. Our objective is to deal with the gunslinger we got in town to try and clean things up. So, thank you. Councilmember Faver, again, thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Faver, and all the work that you've done on this project, Shawn and Ephraim. Thank you for this. This is exciting to hear, and certainly within the Driving Park community. I'd like to ask a question. You were talking a little bit about the loitering and prostitution and that. What is the work that you've been doing to help clean that up? We often, I get calls many times to my office about a particular shopping center or a particular section of town that is plagued by some of these things, and so I'd be interested to hear what you've been doing in the last couple of months to change the narrative.
Yeah, so part of that is, in the boxing gym that we opened up back in June, June 15th, literally maybe a mile down the road, some of the individuals, I won't obviously name them, but some of those individuals are actually in our gym. Whether they pay for a membership, or in some cases, we just give them a free membership, have them work with some kids, bring their kids there, it gives them something else to do, right? Because the idle mind is the devil's playground, so that's part of what we do to address those. We also speak to the individuals that are there in those locations to give them alternatives. But I think more importantly than the information that we give them, it's who's bringing the information, right? We have the Ohio's only nationally recognized credible messenger by DIRS from DC, and that's not saying, that's saying a lot. And for us to get recognition from there and fly out, be flown out twice, all expense paid, which is something we rarely do, is a big deal. So, after we did the summit a few years ago, got those connections, showed how we were connected with those individuals, it's very easy to go in now and have Shawn and some other folks that are from that neighborhood say, "Hey, you know me for this, but this is what I'm doing now." Whether it's out of fear or character, they go along with it, and so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much.
Any additional questions or comments from my colleagues?
I tried to get him to say something.
I just want to thank you all for having us up here, you know? This is it.
He's definitely not a man of few words, but we'll leave it at that. I also want to take this opportunity, we are talking about a land bank property, and oftentimes, they don't get as much acknowledgement as they should. They're just generally just transfers that are happening, but this is indicative of our Department of Development, so to John Turner and to Director Stevens and all of those individuals that worked to bring this to fruition, I want to give them a round of applause as well. Director Stevens, any comments from you?
Thank you, Chair Faver. I can't follow Steve Dunbar, so no further comments.
No one can.
Thank you for your leadership on this.
With that, I'd move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, and thank you all.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With that, may I get a motion to recess? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Counsel is recessed. We will go straight into zoning after the Director's transition. Regular meeting number 60 will now come to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the Journal?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee, all members serve on the committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pretending to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. Before moving forward with the committee this evening, will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation with a request to waive second reading?
Ordinances 3083-2019, 3084, 3085, 3087, 3101, 2974, and 2975-2019.
Thank you. I move to waive second reading on these ordinances.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The first ordinance is 3078-2019 to rezone 1775 Zettler Road, being 4.7 acres, located on the east side of Stelter, 980 feet north of Johnstown Road, from the LM Manufacturing District to the LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is Braavlis Family LLC. The proposed use is industrial development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Northeast Air Commission's recommendation is approval. If there are no questions or comments, I now move to emergency, amend to emergency.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3079-2019 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3112.27 parking setback line, 3312.53 minimum number of loading spaces required, 3363.24 building lines and LM Manufacturing District, and 3363.27 B2 height and area regulations of the Columbus C codes for property located at 1775 Stelter Road to permit reduced development standards for industrial development in the LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is Braavlis Family LLC. The proposed use is industrial development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Northeast Air Commission's recommendation is approval. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I first would like to move to amend to emergency.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3083-2019 to rezone 4203 Sullivan Avenue, being 1.12 acres located on the south side of Sullivan Avenue, 300 feet east of George'sville Road, from the R4 Residential District to C3 Commercial District. The applicant is Janine Cabal. The proposed use is a parking lot. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Greater Hill Topi Air Commission's recommendation is approval, 1223. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance number 3084-2019. It is to rezone 1489 Royal Road, being 229.99 acres located on the south side of Royal Road, 1,000 feet east of Lockbone Road, from the R Rural District to the LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is Warden Capital LLC, care of attorney Jill Tangman. The proposed use is industrial development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Far South Area Commission's recommendation is approval, 10 to 0. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I will move for—
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3085-2019 to rezone 1745 Morris Road, being 1.19 acres located on the south side of Morris Road, 210 feet west of Tamarack Boulevard, from the C4 Commercial District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is the Kroger Company, care of David Hodge attorney. Proposed use is fuel cells. The city's department's recommendation is approval, and the Northland Community Council's recommendation is approval, 13 to 0. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3087-2019 to rezone 1800 George'sville Road, George'sville Square Drive, I'm sorry, being 13.6 acres located on the east side of George'sville Square Drive, 540 feet east of Holt Road, from the LC4 Limited Commercial District to the LC4 Limited Commercial District. The applicant is the Auto Boutique Limited, care of Jeffrey L. Brown attorney. The proposed use is automobile sales. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Westland Air Commission's recommendation is approval, 8 to 1. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3101-2019 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3356.03 C4 permitted uses and 3361.02 CPD permitted uses of the Columbus C codes for property located at 5719 West Broad Street, to permit ground-floor residential uses in CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Homeport. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Westland Air Commission's recommendation is 9 to 2. And again, the applicant is Homeport, care of attorney Laura McGregor-Komak. And if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next is 3112.2019 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3333.04 permitted uses in the ARO Apartment Office District, 3312.21D1 landscaping and screening, 3312.27 parking setback line, 3312.49C minimum number of parking spaces required, 3333.18 building lines, 3333.23B minimum side yard permitted, and 3333.24 rear yard of Columbus C codes for the property located at 1640 East Broad Street, to permit a single-unit dwelling and office on one lot with reduced development standards in the ARO Apartment Office District. The applicant is Quantrill Vinti Limited, care of attorney Matthew Cole. The proposed use is a single-unit dwelling and office on one lot. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Area Commission's recommendation is approval, 631. If there are no questions from my colleagues, I move to amend to emergency.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. And Kathleen Bailey, thank you for being in chambers this evening. I also move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2974-2019 to rezone 2959 Cleveland Avenue, being 1.03 acres located at the southwest corner of Cleveland Avenue and Eddie Stone Avenue, from R4 Residential District to AR2 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Homeport. This was care of Agent Dave Perry. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the North London Air Commission's recommendation for approval was 4 to 2. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Is there a second? I'm bad, I was coughing. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And the next ordinance is a variance on the same address, is 2975-2019, to grant a variance from provisions of Sections 3312.21A3, B3 landscaping and screening, 3312.49 minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 3333.18D2 building lines of the Columbus C codes for property located at 2959 Cleveland Avenue, to permit an apartment building with reduced development standards in the AR2 Apartment Residential District, and to repeal the ordinance 3301-2018 passed December the 8th of 2018. The applicant is Homeport. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the North London Air Commission's recommendation is also approval at 4 to 2. And this will be the new affordable housing—
That's awesome.
—the affordable housing units that will be in the London area, and we're very pleased that this, if my colleagues support this legislation. And we're very pleased, we spoke, we had a hearing on this previously, and we're very pleased that this, the passage of this will begin to permit affordable housing, new affordable housing units on Cleveland Avenue, new development. So, with that, there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you very much. That concludes the zoning this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Adjourn. Counsel, we'll reconvene in five minutes. Do I have a motion to reconvene? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Regular meeting number 59 is now reconvened. The next committee to come before counsel is the Economic Development Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Tonight I have ordinance number 3013-2019 to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Donley Concrete Cutting Company and 2455 Bryce Road LLC for a tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 consecutive years in consideration of a total proposed capital investment of approximately 2.65 million, the creation of five new full-time permanent positions, and the retention of 52 full-time jobs. Established in 1997, Donley Concrete Cutting Company is a privately-held company headquartered in Pickerington, Ohio, that specializes in concrete sawing and drilling. The company's services include concrete drilling, concrete cutting, flat sawing, core drilling, wall sawing, curb sawing, ground penetrating radar, mini excavator rental, diamond grinding. The entity 2455 Bryce Road LLC is a real estate holding company owned by David Donley, the president of Donley Concrete Cutting Company. Donley Concrete Cutting Company and 2455 Bryce Road LLC are proposing to invest a total capital expenditure of approximately $2,650,000, which includes $2 million in real property improvements, $500,000 in acquisition costs, $100,000 in furniture and fixtures, and $50,000 in machinery and equipment to construct a new corporate headquarters. The proposed corporate headquarters will consist of approximately 33,000 square feet and be constructed on a vacant and dilapidated property located at 2455 and 2475 Bryce Road in Columbus, Ohio, next to I-70 and the old Bob Evans and Chi Chi's Restaurant retail site. The company intends to relocate its entire operation from Pickerington to Columbus. Donley Concrete Cutting Company will be the tenant and employer of record and will enter into a long-term lease agreement with 2455 Bryce Road LLC and the owner of the property. Additionally, the company will retain and relocate 52 full-time jobs with an annual payroll of approximately $2.7 million, which will be new to the city of Columbus and create five new net-time full-time permanent positions with an estimated annual payroll of approximately $260,000 at the proposed project site. Director, did you have any comments about this project?
Thank you, Chair Remy. I have no comments. We would be happy to answer questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I request to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
And then I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Pass, amended to the clerk.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance number 3033-2019 to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with AmerisourceBergen Drug Corporation for a tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 consecutive years in consideration of the company's proposed capital investment of $32,500,000, the creation of 28 new full-time permanent positions, and retention of 161 full-time permanent positions. At this time, I'd like to move to table indefinitely.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Tabled indefinitely.
Thank you very much. Next, I've got ordinance number 3080-2019 to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer— capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash between projects with the Development taxable bond fund, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a, a grant agreement with Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority to provide funding for urban redevelopment projects, to authorize the expenditure of one million three hundred and fifty thousand from the Development taxable bond fund, and to declare an emergency. The city will enter into a grant agreement with Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority in the amount of one million three hundred and fifty thousand in order to provide gap financing for urban redevelopment projects within the city of Columbus. The C F C F A program will provide funding for projects within the urban core and adjacent neighborhoods within the city in order to facilitate projects that will assist in the revitalization of properties in the urban core of the city as a whole. The long-term goal of the fund is to enable the C F C F A to help fill funding gaps for the redevelopment of smaller-scale projects in traditional neighborhood corridors. These redevelopment projects encounter issues as older buildings can have amplified costs to bring up to current code and safety standards. This fund will allow C F C F A to provide flexible funding to fill those cost gaps for targeted projects within the city. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Hart.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance number thirty-one sixty-six, twenty nineteen, to remove parcels from the existing arena district tax increment financing area by amending ordinance number two-three-five-six ninety-eight, to create two new tax increment financing areas, also known as TIFs, encompassing certain parcels of real property, to declare improvements to the parcels with, within each TIF area to a, to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, to require the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, to require the distribution of the applicable portion of those service payments to this Columbus City School District, to establish municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent funds for the deposit of the remainder of those service payments, to specify the public infrastructure improvements to be made that directly benefit or serve parcels in the TIF areas, and to declare an emergency. The Department of Development is proposing the creation of two new tax increment financing districts under Section fifty-seven oh nine point four zero of the Ohio Revised Code. One TIF area is composed of one or more parcels in the area, generally bounded by Park Street on the east, the I six seventy entrance ramp on the north, uh, School Street on the west, and Spruce Street on the south, and is to be known as the Marriott A C TIF. The second TIF area is an area generally bounded by Park Street on the west of the, west of the west, Spruce Street on the north, Wall Street on the east, and Vine Street on the south, and is to be known as the North Market TIF. This ordinance establishes these two TIFs and provides for a hundred percent exemption from real property taxation on all development on each parcel in each TIF for a period of not more than thirty years. With that exemption to take effect and commence in the first tax year in which an improvement of at least fifty thousand dollars due to the construction or renovation of a structure takes place appears on the tax list and duplicate of real and property utility property for the parcel. The Columbus City Schools will receive in the same manner and times as usual all amounts that it would have received in real property taxes had the TIF exemptions not been granted. Annual service payments in lieu of taxes will be made with respect to redevelopment on the parcels in the TIF. The applicable portion of those service payments will be distributed directly to the Columbus City School District with the remaining non-school portion of those service payments paid to the city for deposit into the TIF fund established in this ordinance. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Hart.
Pass.
Thank you very much. With your permission, I'll move on to environment.
Please.
Thank you very much. I have in tonight in environment, I have ordinance number thirty-one twenty-five, twenty nineteen, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish purchase orders for the purchase of eight rear-loading refuse trucks from the Larson Group and eight front-box loading refuse trucks from E S E C Corporation, also known as Columbus Peterbilt, to authorize the expenditure of four million five hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred and forty dollars within the Refuge General Obligation Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Service Division of Refuge Collection utilizes rear-loading and front-box loading refuse trucks and citywide residential trash pickup and to support the cleanup of illegal dumping. The Department of Public Service and Fleet Management recognize the need to replace older trucks in its fleet beyond the useful service life of the vehicle. This purchase will replace eight rear-loading and eight front-box loading refuse trucks that have reached the end of their useful service life. The purchasing office advertised and solicited a formal request, quest for best value procurement to establish contracts for C N G-powered rear-loading and front-box loading refuse trucks. Proposals were evaluated and two awards were made for the purchase of these vehicles with the intent to compare vendors on equipment performance, longevity, and overall satisfaction with the, the equipment. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues in regards to this ordinance? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Hart.
Pass.
And that's all I have in environment this evening. With your permission, I'll move on to administration.
Please.
Thank you very much. In administration this evening, I have ordinance number thirty-two forty, twenty nineteen, to authorize the Columbus City Council to enter into contract with the Workforce Development Board of Central Ohio for the administration of the New Americans Recruitment Initiative to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Job Growth Subfund and to declare an emergency. It is vital that the city's workforce be representative of, of its own population, and that includes increasing the diversity of our workforce by ensuring that our immigrant communities have opportunities for employment within the city of Columbus. The New Americans Recruitment Initiative provides grants to local nonprofit, immigrant, refugee, and new American organizations to facilitate civil service testing and workforce development training. The goal is to guide residents through the city of Columbus's employment opportunities and processes, and to promote civil service employment opportunities among the refugee, immigrant, and new American communities in Columbus. Council is funding a total of five grants with a maximum award of seventy-five hundred dollars each. Grant recipients will be required to attend an informational system, excuse me, session led by the Civil Service Commission. This session will provide a broad overview of the civil service application process, tested in untested positions, and a discussion of civil service opportunities that may be most applicable for grantees constituents. Grantees will also require, be required to host at least two community informational sessions for their constituents to learn about civil service opportunities, and must identify and secure a remote test site and coordinate with the Civil Service Commission for the administration, for, for the administration of one or more selected civil service exams. The Workforce Development Board of Central Ohio will serve as the fiscal agent for the distribution of the grants to selected organizations, and will also provide administrative support and guidance regarding best practices for the creation of expansion of workforce development initiatives. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, Council President Hart.
Mr. Chairman, against want to appreciate you. This has been a lot of work that your office has put on. Earlier today, we were having a conversation, a couple of us, around just the growth of this community and how so much of that will be with new, new Americans. And, um, just like we said around, um, our safety forces, um, the folks that work for the city should reflect the diversity of our neighborhoods, and I think that, uh, this is a, a strong step in that direction, making sure that we have a more diversified, um, workforce, uh, for the city of Columbus. So just thank you for, for the work that you've done.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments or questions, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Hart.
Pass.
And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before counsel is the Health and Human Services Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Ty, Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The first ordinance I have is ordinance twenty-eight eighty-seven dash two thousand nineteen, and I'm going to ask Bruce Lucky, President, CEO of Homeport, to come to the podium, please. And this is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with the Columbus Housing Partnership doing business as Homeport for the Resident Services Program, to authorize appropriation and expenditure within the Emergency Human Services Subfund and to declare an emergency. I'm going to turn the floor over to you and let you really talk about the importance of, um, this ordinance and these dollars to your organization.
Thank you. President Hart, and President Pro Tem Brown, city councilmembers, particularly Councilmember Tyson, um, thank you for your generous consideration, um, regarding this funding. Your support will enable Homeport to assist our residents in housing and economic stability and to lessen the strain on individuals or families. Our resident service coordinators will be able to help connect residents through referrals, linkage, and community sources to food, to furniture, safe children's cribs, medical, dental services, and other government benefits. It will also enable our residents to learn about and access education and job training programs. In two thousand and eighteen, Homeport served four hundred of its residents, producing eight hundred referrals. Through ongoing adult and children after-school programs, six hundred individuals were served, including two hundred and twenty-five children. These efforts increased on-time rent payments and overall bill payments. Seventy families avoided eviction through our resident services team's work. Um, that also included emergency funding and financial counseling to, to hopefully keep them, um, out of that situation, um, in the future. The cost to the community would be far greater, and particularly far greater to those families, um, if these resources were not available. So we thank you very much for your consideration tonight.
Thank you, Bruce, and, um, certainly one of, uh, three goals, one of the three goals this council's focused on is moving people out of property, helping them to be sustained in their, sustained or move forward in their current conditions. And the work that Homeport does in terms of, one, you know, are known as an affordable housing developer, but however, those, the individuals that are utilizing your properties certainly need other services. And I am just really thankful for, um, Homeport. You've been a great partner to the city, um, but also, I think people have to realize that the individuals that you have in your, in your units still need other support, and that's what these dollars, you know, do. And it certainly costs us a lot more money. We have council members who are, we're all focused on it, but certainly Councilmember Favre is focused on, you know, eviction prevention. And, um, and so again, as you mentioned in your statement today, that this was, um, provide aid to families who may be, I'm looking at the threat of eviction, and we know what that cost would look like to an individual, so we're thankful for the work that you're doing, as well as the financial counseling and, and, and coaching services. So we, um, really do appreciate Homeport, and, um, hopefully my colleagues will be supportive. I also see Leah and Maude in council chambers this evening. We appreciate the work that you're doing. So, um, my colleagues, if, do you have any questions about this? No, this is a great partner. Seeing none, then I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Hart.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance thirty thirty-six dash two thousand nineteen, is to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a contract with the, with the United Way of Central Ohio to be the administrator of the Department's Social Innovation Initiative to authorize the expenditure of one hundred and nineteen thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars. Director Stevens, do you want to comment on, um, the importance of the innovation, social innovation initiative?
Thank you, Chair Tyson, President Hart, and members of council. The city of Columbus currently implements the Human Services Grant Program. The city's fifty partners with fifty-four, uh, funded programs are moving towards a common vision under the direction of the city of Columbus in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. The Social Innovation Fund will be used to incubate ideas, practices, and collaborations that build capacity within our nonprofit sector. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I think that is, it is, um, a wonderful initiative to be able to work with those nonprofits our current receiving funds, fifty nonprofit organizations, and fifty-eight programs that we're funding, and to, again, to help them to get to the, to, to get to the next level and serving our residents and looking for new and different ideas. So, um, I'm pleased to present this legislation to my colleagues, and if there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Hart.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance number thirty sixty-two dash two thousand nineteen, to authorize the appropriation of one million two hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars from the Unappropriate Balance of the, of the General Government Grants Fund to Columbus Public Health for the two thousand nineteen HOPOR program. The HOPOR program provides for the implementation of long-term comprehensive strategies for meeting the housing needs of low-income persons with HIV and AIDS and their families. Eligible activities include providing housing information services, resource identification, acquisition, rehabilitation, conversion, lease, and repair facilities to provide housing and services. New construction of housing units, project or tenant-based rental assistance, short-term rent, mortgage and utility payments, supportive services, technical assistance, and administrative support. Equitized Health will serve about approximately one hundred and thirty-two persons living with HIV and AIDS with tenant-based assistance. They will also provide short-term mortgage assistance and permanent housing placement. The Lutheran Social Services will serve twenty persons and providing them with the similar services. Jewish Family Services will provide supportive employment services to thirty individuals, and this funding also supports individuals in Lancaster Fairfield Community Action Agency, the Licking County Housing Coalition, and also, um, individuals in Delaware, Fairfield, Franklin, Licking, Madison, Morrell, Pickaway, and Union County. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Hart.
Pass.
Thank you. The final ordinance this evening, um, Mr. Bill Owens was down earlier in council chambers, and he spoke to this, uh, ordinance this evening where there was no need for him to stay, um, this evening, as, uh, he, so he spoke on this earlier. So, the ordinance is thirty-one sixty-one, is to authorize the Columbus City Council to enter into a grant agreement with the Clintonville Beach Wall Community Resources Center in support of the family services and the Choice Food Pantry, and to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Neighbor Initiative Subfund to declare an emergency, and this is for forty thousand dollars. This legislation will provide emergency food and basic necessities, referrals, how, referrals for housing and recovery. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, the staff and volunteers provided support to over seven hundred, seventy-eight hundred unduplicated individuals at or below two hundred percent poverty. Twenty-one percent of those, of these individuals were seniors, and twenty-nine percent were children. And additionally, forty percent self-reported as refugees or immigrants. And so we are supportive of the Clintonville Beach Wall, um, Community Resources Center for the work that they're doing to support our residents. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Hart.
Pass.
Thank you. And that concludes my legislation this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we'll move on to the final committee of council this evening. It's the Rules and Reference Committee. I chair that committee. There are two, uh, additional ordinance, uh, that, uh, still have to be read. The first is thirty-one hundred dash twenty nineteen, is to amend and enact various provisions of Chapter three seventy-five of the Columbus City Code in order to strengthen the levying collection and, and allocation of admissions tax receipts and to declare an emergency. Thirty-one oh two dash twenty nineteen is to amend and enact various provisions of Chapter thirty-seven, three seventy-six of the Columbus City Code in order to strengthen the levying, collection, and allocation of admission tax for facility stabilization receipts and to declare an emergency. Last year, this council passed legislation to nearly double public funding for arts and inclusion in Columbus. We created two funds, the Creation, Innovation, and Inclusion Fund for operating dollars needed, as well as a facility, uh, facility stabilization fund for capital needs. Thirty-one hundred and thirty-one oh two are parallel amendments to make uniform changes to both funds. First, we are clarifying language to reaffirm that electronic marketplaces and marketplace facilitators are subject to this fee. This reemphasizes that groups like StubHub, Ticketmaster, and others have to pay their fair share as well. There's no reason why Kappa should, should have to pay an admissions fee, but Ticketmaster selling seats to Broadway across America should not. Second, this legislation allows the auditor to utilize point five percent of the funds for admissions fees. This will allow the auditor's office to effectively collect admissions fees and ensure timely delivery of the funds to the intended recipients. Third, the amendment strengthens the collection mechanism. Ticket sellers who do not pay the own amount shall be subject to a penalty amounting to ten percent of the tax owed. The penalty will clear, carry a daily interest rate of one percent of the total penalty. This interest will be compounded and assessed each day by the penalty, each day the penalty is not paid to the city. Such interest rates stops accruing once all penalties and interest payments are remitted, collected, and deemed satisfactory. Are there any questions by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage by voice on ordinance thirty-one hundred dash twenty nineteen. Please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown? Mr. Dorans? Ms. Favor? Mr. Remy? Ms. Tyson? President Hart?
Yes, ordinance thirty-one hundred passed. Now I move for passage in ordinance thirty-one oh two by voice. Now I move for passage on ordinance thirty-one oh two by voice. Please call the row.
Ms. Brown?
Say.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Ms. Reemy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
President Harden?
Yes. Ordinances have passed. That is all we have on our agenda. May I have a motion to reset, to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you so much. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Reemy Tyson, President Harden.
Council is adjourned.